Are we ready? Fabulous. Okay, good evening, everyone. 7:04, we're going to call to order the meeting of the Board of Education for Community High School District 128. If you could all stand and say the pledge, please. Okay, roll call when you're ready, please, Carol.
Jim Batson. Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
Okay, we note all board members present, although we did vote to have Midhalesh Kotwal join us. He was not able to come to the board meeting tonight. He will take the oath of office and join us at our committee meeting in November. So, quick review of the agenda. We will start with communication and an invitation for public comment. We will invite our teachers' union to give a report. We will hear our student school board representative reports, foyer requests, and good news from Dr. Herman. Our consent vote agenda includes items that we routinely approve in one motion. These are meeting minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, ed tour requests, employment matters, disposable disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, and financial reports. These items have gone through extensive board committee review and recommendations, and all of the documentation concerning these items has been provided to the board members as well as the public in advance to assure extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do we have any board members wishing to remove items tonight from the consent vote agenda?
No.
Seeing none, we will move on to items for action. Tonight, we have coming out of P&amp;P, unemployment of employees, and then coming out of F&amp;F, we have an authorization to bid the Libertyville High School cafeteria renovation as well as the fiscal year '24 state maintenance project grant. For information, we will have a presentation on academic performance data, a grading and assessment update, superintendent's report, board comments and events. Do we have an ISB report tonight?
No, never.
Okay. And then do we have a CEDL report tonight? Okay. In other reports, I will provide a brief update for the D-128 Foundation for Learning. We will discuss future agenda items, and then we will adjourn. So, let's start up at the top with communication and an invitation for public comment. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on and invite our teachers' union representative for their report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Carnstead. I'm a science teacher at Libertyville High School, and I'm serving as the secretary of our union. I'm honored to be in the position of speaking on behalf of our union tonight, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you. The purpose of speaking at these meetings is to be an informative teammate with the board as well as our administration by sharing our members' voices. We hope this is used as a tool to reflect and refine our decisions and practices. Now that we're over two months into the school year, we are in the swing of things, and there's plenty to talk about. First, we wanted to welcome the newest member to the board, Midhalesh Kotwal. Kotwal, excuse me. We are looking forward to working with you, and we are excited to hear your voice at the tables. We work together to serve the students of the district. Second, we wanted to acknowledge something the union and district administration accomplished together. As you may know, a law was passed at the start of August that changed the pathway for acquiring tenure in the state of Illinois. The new law passed just before the time we usually recognize teachers who have received tenure on opening day. And as a result, the district wasn't quite ready to recognize 12 teachers in our district who met the requirements for tenure. This is an unfortunate situation for all involved because the most significant holdup, which, under the previous system, was that these 12 teachers were not evaluated during the 2020-2021 school year of e-learning, which was beyond anyone's control. Thankfully, through the grievance process between district administration and union, we achieved a resolution, and those 12 teachers were recognized as tenured on the October 9th Institute Day. This may seem like a small thing, but I could tell you personally, as one of those 12 teachers, how important this was to our members. I especially want to thank Brian Kelly for his hard work on this issue. The third and biggest item I've come to speak to you about is our district's movement towards heterogeneous classes. The move from a traditionally tracked system where students are grouped according to ability level, homogeneous, to one where students of varying ability levels are in the same class is a massive undertaking. Encouraging our striving learners to strive harder by being with students of higher academic achievement is a noble idea. But this is a massive shift in educational policy that has our members deeply concerned about how to successfully implement this change. It has been discussed here how concerned our membership is about the speed at which changes are being adopted in our district, and on the October 9th Institute Day caused a lot of these concerns to surface among our membership. Our members all have different roles and therefore have varying opinions, so there's a lot there, but I'm going to try to boil down those concerns into two key categories. First, many of our members feel that the partnership with equal opportunity schools unfortunately resembles another AP push. The first presenter of the Institute Day that was given by equal opportunity schools, our membership felt the majority of the presentation focused on increasing AP enrollment. After that presentation, we took a 45-minute survey that centered around our attitudes about AP classes and concluded with us recommending students to enroll in AP classes. Given the way that we were told about the reporting of the data, many teachers also felt, reported to us, that they felt pressured to recommend students into AP classes. The message of the EOS presentation was further confused by the next keynote consultant, Tony Frontier, who gave a nice presentation that was positively received, but it ended with a very explicit message for teachers to slow down in their classrooms to accommodate the students of varying ability levels. While his presentation was high-spirited and positive, ending with an encouraging staff sing-along that we all enjoyed, no update was provided in terms of the work that he has been doing with the teams of teachers. Upon reflection, would have been an ideal time to get the staff on board with the work that he is doing with our district. Many of our members are torn because we feel that pushing kids into AP courses runs counter to our social and emotional learning goals in this district. Later that day on October 9th, there was a presentation at the committee meeting after school about the results from our student SEL survey data from earlier this year. One of the final slides of that presentation was a word cloud with the prompt, "Thinking about everything in your life, what feels the hardest for you right now?" The biggest word, and therefore most common reply, "schoolwork", followed by college apps, homework stress, and tests. To be clear, we believe in challenging our kids. But the messaging around the EOS presentation was, "We're not pushing them hard enough." While simultaneously, the kids are pointing to us, that workload is their biggest stressor. There's also some confusion as to what exactly EOS is doing to help us move to heterogeneous classes. The majority of the district messaging about why the shift to more heterogeneous classes is important, outside of the new Advanced Placement Act, is that our minority, special services, English language learner students are overrepresented in our striving learners' classes. In fact, hours after the Institute Day at that same committee meeting on October 9th, the board viewed a presentation where this data, not AP data, was used to support the movement to heterogeneous classes. Therefore, why are we bringing a consultant whose stated purpose is to increase AP enrollment? Why isn't the conversation revolving more around diagonal movement from co-taught to regular, or even regular to honors? Why is our focus all of a sudden so centered around increasing AP classes specifically? The second key point of that Institute Day that emerged was, "Our teachers are concerned about what resources and supports will be available to our students and teachers as we make these big changes." What sort of extra help will we have for struggling students? Will students have the ability to move down if they feel the challenge is too much without compromising optims which are designed for effective instruction? What sort of professional development is going to be available, and how will we balance that on a large scale with our current teaching duties? We understand that there are lots of smaller trainings going on with targeted groups of teachers, but it's unclear how this is going to be scaled up to all teachers. We have a passionate staff in a lot of different places about this issue of the district shifting to heterogeneous classes. This has been addressed already by Dr. Herman at the previous May 8th committee meeting, and she's right. This change isn't going to happen quickly. However, it's clear our members are yearning for more meaningful professional development to prepare for this shift. They are anxious to learn about what support will be in place for our students, both in the academic domain and the SEL domain. They want some clarity that our district's approach to the shift to heterogeneous classes is done intentionally and in a way that will benefit our students and not just as a way to increase AP enrollment or simply to be compliant. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Moving on to our student school board representative reports.
Good evening. This month was a big month for Vernon Hills High School, with the first of many major dances being executed successfully. To say homecoming was successful is honestly an understatement. With over 1,000 tickets being sold, there were plenty of things to do at the dance, such as playing games like Bago, grabbing on some dipping dots, jamming on the silent disco, and some students' personal favorite, moshing. Days leading up to the dance were filled with hype thanks to all of the student participation. In school, students could be seen dressed up with their favorite stuffed animal and onesie, bringing school spirit to an all-time high and bringing our community even closer. Monday Extreme Flag Football was just another event that brought students together because the white team made a jaw-dropping last-minute comeback against the blue team. This is also just another one of the events where Homecoming Court was recognized. Students in Homecoming Court could be seen executing their most elaborate walkouts throughout the week. In addition, school assemblies were flawlessly executed, with the first one being the color competition assembly. Decked in their class colors, students flooded their class area on Thursday morning, snapping pictures and warming up their voices for the fight song. With each class performing well, winners were announced at the Friday Homecoming Assembly in which freshmen were declared winners of the color competition, with seniors taking second, juniors taking third, and sophomores taking fourth. Lastly, student council tried four-way tug-of-war for the first time during the assembly, and students seemed to love it. Some even expressed that they were on the edge of their seats because it looked like it could have been anyone's game. To wrap up homecoming, I'd like to give a special shout-out to all the teachers, staff, and admin who helped pull this off. Now, let's talk about last Tuesday when our cafeteria provider, Quest, invited a few students to a food committee meeting during their lunch periods to sample new food and give feedback on marketing, pricing, quality, and taste. Students got to sample a variety of food and were given a short survey on what they thought of it and how much they'd be willing to pay for it. They also had a special host appearance by the CEO of Quest and a representative from Coke. The owner, Mike McTarget, used the help of students to craft a mission statement that revolved around quality control, price, and technology to better guide the company. And just this past Friday, we had our first Cougar Class Act Award Ceremony of the year. We served breakfast and celebrated the awardees and families before school, right here in the library. These 18 students are nominated by teachers who believe they represent our daring mission values and our school by being considerate of others' perspectives, aware and positive within our school environment, and by serving their peers and teachers. Congratulations to Noah Rocholes, Joel Fivette, Timur Armanov, Isabella Reyes, Daniel Gorgony, Vera Balbas, Marian Jacob, Gazelle Allison Dovo, Ariel Gluck, Elder Elgeno, Beatrice Alonso, and Marzusio Sanchez Sierzo.
With the end of the month approaching, that also means that the fall sports seasons are wrapping up. Boys and Girls Cross Country recently competed in the first-ever 3A regional race this past weekend. The boys' team took third place overall, with senior Charlie Blackmer winning the entire race. On the girls' end, the team took fifth place overall, with senior Anna Lester earning a third-place finish. Both teams qualified onto sectionals and will compete next week. Congratulations and good luck at sectionals. Girls' tennis also had an exhilarating end to their season, with sophomore Paulina making an incredible run in the post-state tournament, finishing 3-2 in the state finals. The team also finished second in the CSL Conference. Golf had a successful season as well, with both teams finishing at state. Senior Anna Lee made it to the second day of state to cap off her illustrious four-year varsity career. The entire boys' team qualified for state, where senior Kartik Vasudev led them to day two in a high-ranking performance. Girls' volleyball starts their playoff run tomorrow against Chicago Amundson at Ridgewood High School. On a more musical note, our band squad was able to revisit their old stomping grounds at the middle schools where they played alongside the middle school bands. It was a good experience for both groups to collaborate for a night. And another aspect of collaboration is the student equity team that is led by Mrs. Young. Various leaders from the religious affinity groups come together to meet and discuss more ways in which the school administration and students can work together to make all students feel a larger sense of belonging. In addition to that, they discuss heavy topics such as the tragedies happening in Israel and Palestine, as well as the war going on in Ukraine and Russia. These are very touching and vulnerable conversations to have, and Mrs. Young and other student leaders take the time to have those, at times uncomfortable, conversations in order to make everyone feel heard and seen. Following the homecoming festivities, Daring Day kicked off with the underclassmen participating in a day of career exploration in the Rite Assembly. Freshmen spent the day hearing personal stories of adversity, achievement, and everything in between from three student speakers, Saskia, Nathan, and Holly. They were then able to split off into smaller groups and do various team-building activities and meet new people. For the sophomores, they created their own score counts and spent a few hours finding possible career paths they might want to explore. Score provides several career preferability tests that helps this process seem less daunting. We're all looking forward to another week, another month of fun activities and hard work in and out of the classroom.
Speaking of outside the classroom, VHHS also had many student activities organized in other facilities. Marking the end of Hispanic Heritage Month, Latinx and Hispanic students were invited to attend the Sullivan Center's Latinx Student Summit. There, Jose Alvarez, an award-winning author, taught students how to convey their identity through poetry. VHHS students also got to attend the Black Student Workshop, also hosted by Sullivan Center, where they got to hear speakers Ernest Crim III and Trey Baker. The experience brought discussions of mental health, positive impact, and identity. These opportunities holistically allow D-128 students to embrace their cultures. Additionally, many field trips have occurred as a vital learning experience in many classes. Some include AP portfolio students going to the Art Institute in Chicago and journalism students attending a satellite workshop in Romoville, Illinois. AP portfolio students study non-European versus European art, which was directly correlating to the art exhibits, the New Japanese Art exhibit in Chicago. The journalism field trip was attended by both LHS and VHHS students and focused on content creation, where students participated in social media challenges during the day. Additionally, on Daring Day, October 10th, upperclassmen also had activities. Juniors participated in the optional PSAT MMSQT exam, with it being online for the first time ever. Preparing for the new format, VHHS used the previous week to prepare students for the technological needs of this exam. In the end, students had mixed opinions, with many noting its efficiency, but also the difficulty in adjusting to this new format. Seniors participated by some being right leaders, creating meaningful relationships with freshmen, and having the opportunity to get feedback on their personal statements. Many English teachers gave great feedback about essays in 20-minute conferences from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. As the November 1st deadline approaches, VHHS also recognizes our awesome staff. Teachers who teach courses that are heavily taken by juniors have a large amount of letters of recommendations. Special shout-out to Hamaroy Chathery, who is one of the many who has dedicated her time to writing more than 20 recommendation letters. This season of applications calls for the appreciation for many teachers who have contributed to make this stressful time worth it. Thank you.
So much has happened this month with homecoming season and student organizations at LHS.
I'm sorry, we're quiet. We can't hear you.
Oh.
Is it working now? Now it is. Thank you so much. We don't want anybody to miss what you're saying.
So much has happened this month with homecoming season and student organizations at LHS. Our Homecoming Week started off with window painting on small businesses' windows in downtown Libertyville, and clubs and students were assigned to paint a window related to our homecoming theme, Sweet Home Chicago. We are so grateful for the businesses that gave us such a fun opportunity. Student council organized our Spirit Days for Homecoming Week, like Chicago Game Day, where students wore Chicago sports gear, Lincoln Park Zoo, where students dressed up as animals, and Color Wars, which us seniors won the Spirit Cup at the Homecoming Assembly for being the loudest and most spirited. The morning of the dance, we had our Homecoming Assembly, where our clubs and sports walked down Brainerd along with the Stuko floats in our Homecoming Court. Later that night, the dance started at 7:00 p.m. with an awesome DJ on the dance floor and movies in the studio theater. As a member of seniors' Stuko board, I thoroughly enjoyed helping plan this, and it overall went very well. My freshmen from Link Crew loved it too, which is amazing to hear since it is their first high school dance ever. Something noticeable that has been happening with student involvement is students starting their own initiatives with the help of LHS staff. For example, senior Jack Birmingham founded the Recovery Project, a youth-led startup organization that aims to spread kindness, positivity, empathy, and encouragement. He said, "I personally was inspired to start it following my friend's attempted suicide during my sophomore year. I realized that most people will not care about a problem unless it affects them directly, and that this knowledge can be used to help people." LHS staff have been super supportive of the Recovery Project ever since it started. Birmingham says, "People like Dr. Nelson, Mrs. Ulix, and Dr. Kay have all allowed us to fundraise, put up flyers, and actively promote ourselves at school." Birmingham and his team are working on managing social media, but are also investing in a website to reach a greater audience. Another example is the Impact Initiative. It's a fundraiser extension of Interact, a community service club that aims to aid communities beyond Libertyville and even the United States by using funds generated to donate to the United Nations Children's Fund, or UNICEF. Senior Maya Alzad, who is the founder of the Impact Initiative, said, "I've always had a passion for service. Knowing people with backgrounds in areas of less-than-ideal conditions inspires me to reach beyond what I can see." I found great support from Ms. Ulix, who is an advisor for Interact and has assisted me in the development of the fundraiser. Alzad and her peers launched a T-shirt being sold through the LHS web store, by which proceeds would go to UNICEF. Now, I'm going to talk about clubs. Best Buddies, a club that builds friendships between peers and students with disabilities, had their annual Halloween party meeting and had a fundraiser to raise money for the Best Buddies Carnival, which is coming soon. LHS Model United Nations had their Carl Sandberg Model United Nations Conference, where they competed and delegated in committees. Student Timothy Correa won Honorable Delegate, and junior Prem Acharya won Outstanding Delegate. It's great to see some students win awards in such a competitive conference. The Latin American Student Organization had their Latinx Summit last week with Vernon Hills students. Senior Asariotsi said, "The theme of the summit was about Latinos driving prosperity, power, and progress in America. So, there were a lot of guest speakers that would tell us their stories, and it's supposed to empower and inspire us to embrace our Latino identities. I have some friends who attended and said it was a great opportunity to get together and bond with other Latinx students to celebrate their heritage." Now, we will hear Molly share her report and Louis' report as well, because unfortunately, he couldn't join us here tonight.
Okay, this is on the behalf of Louis. Thank you, Rakai and Molly, for reading my statement on my behalf. I'm currently at the final rehearsals for the Libertyville Musical as our performance of The Drowsy Chaperone is this coming weekend, starting on Thursday, October 26th till Saturday, the 28th. The entire cast and crew is very excited to perform what we have been rehearsing for each day after school for the last few months. The LHS orchestra performed their annual Fright Night Concert on October 12th, opening with students carrying in their director, Mr. Marino, as he laid in a coffin. He awakened from the sounds of the orchestra to commence the performance. Each orchestra level performed a variety of pieces that fit the mysterious and spooky theme of the night. Sophomore violin player Ava Thomas said that "My favorite piece was the Red Sonna Movement of the Tan Dun. It took a lot of work, but it was amazing to hear a finished project." Or product. "The first couple of weeks that we rehearsed, nobody could figure out when to play or what to do, but when everybody learned to listen to each other, it became such a fun piece to play." The final orchestra performed the overture from The Phantom of the Opera, which echoed throughout the gym that evening. Highlights from the strings, brass, and the band in the organ flowed together to bring a familiar tune for many in the audience. On the same theme of fine arts, the choir department performed their first fall concert this past month. The songs included "It Had to Be You" by Harry Connick Jr., "Hands Across the Universe", "Let the River Run" by Carly Simon, and the fan favorite, "The Nightmare Before Christmas" medley. Usually, the first choir concert is performed alongside the local Libertyville middle schools, but it was decided to have two concerts this fall season, one with and one without the middle schoolers due to timing and dates. Sam Foster, a member of the concert choir, which consists of juniors and seniors, said that "It was a fun experience and definitely one of my top favorites. The audience was so amazing, and it really got me excited." Now, back to myself. Earlier this month, Louis and I were selected to be on the LHS Homecoming Court. Members were voted in by their peers and staff to represent the school. We then filmed videos for the assembly, picked out walkout music for the homecoming dance, and had our own flow at the parade. This opportunity was amazing, as it allowed us to feel more connected to the students at our school and the greater Libertyville community. We were able to develop close friendships in a short amount of time and felt recognized for the work we put in to be role models at the school. Out of the 15 of us selected to be on the court, students voted for one homecoming wildcat, which ended up being senior Henry Kelson. He shared that he was excited to see that the effort he has put into connecting with students and staff over the past four years has not gone unnoticed, and was grateful to be recognized for making others feel at home at LHS. In addition, this past month, many LHS sports have hosted charity events raising money for both their programs and outside foundations. Our girls' volleyball team hosted their annual Dig Pink game last Wednesday to raise funds for the Side Out Foundation, donating to breast cancer awareness research. The game unites the program, players, and community while also honoring the family and friends who lost their battles with breast cancer, are currently fighting or had fought breast cancer, or are supporting someone who is fighting breast cancer. Senior player Stella Meyer shared that "This tradition is really important to the program, is it unites everyone involved as a family, even those on the opposite side of the net." She and her teammates played a great game wearing pink jerseys for the cause. Two weeks prior to that game, our girls' cross-country team hosted their charity meet for the Anita Kaufman Foundation to raise awareness for epilepsy and honor our star runner and team captain who has epilepsy. We wore our purple uniforms, sold purple laces and T-shirts, and hosted a telethon to raise money for the organization. Captain Margot McGromley shared that she was grateful for the support from the runners, coaches, foundation, and community. She stated that "The Anita Kaufman Foundation helped her a lot as a kid, so she was incredibly grateful that the LHS allowed for the team to give back, as the foundation is equally grateful for the funds." As a team, we agree that it was so special to not only run for ourselves, but to run for a charitable cause. Overall, this trend in sport fundraising opens doors for our many programs, as it shows that our sport can be so much more to our community than something just to watch or cheer on.
Nicely done, everyone. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our student board reps? Okay. Great job, guys. Thank you. Moving on, item D, foyer requests.
Yes, in the log, we listed two foyer requests that we received and completed this year. Excuse me, this month. Thank you to Bryant and Carol, who do the yeoman share of work gathering all that information.
Excellent. And then I will let you keep rolling with the good news.
Yes. We have a long list of students who we will continue to recognize. The following D-128 seniors are recently named National Merit Commended Students. From Libertyville High School, we have Brayden Bradford, Oliver Braun, William Carney, Ethan Greenhouse, Adaleah Herman, Cole Karazakos, Saif Kotp, Erin Ma, Owen McGrary, Aditi Nair, Molly Neary, John Oswald, Lauren Parker, Eleni Rappa, Amelia Scanio, Edward Stewart, and Eric Vu. And then our Vernon Hills High School students, Keenan Chung, Benjamin Freeman, Emma Fricano, Palananyan Kanan, Ashini Kokar, Colette Koffstein, Alexi Lopez, Neil Madi Dashkum, Lynn Jean Ni, Kristen Rakers, Haragovin Saroth, Mitchell Saunders, Zachary Seaver, Samuel Schla, Aaron Singh, Rohi Sabranian, Iris Tom, Candarp Varia, Kartik Vasuveda, Absara Vimilalaara, Madeline Wayne, Trey Whitmer, Luke Wu, Edward Zhao, James Zhao, and Margaret Zwinski. The commended students are recognized for the exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the PSAT MMSQT that they took last October. Next, we have D-128 Special Olympians who competed in the bowling sectional on October 14th in Rockford. John Keating took home gold in the highest division and will be representing the D-128 Storm at the state meet in Peoria on December 2nd. Next, Libertyville High School recognized its third Athletic Hall of Fame class during homecoming festivities. This year's honorees were the entire 2004 football team, who many of them were there, which was great to see. Uh, uh, coaches Harry Carlson, Coach Bill Dorch, and Vange Burnett from 1932, Craig Schwerman from 1967, Mary Teigs from 1980, Jim Pop from 1982, and Shane Sanders from 1982. And finally, October is National Principals Month, a time when we recognize the amazing work done by our school principals. So on behalf of the D-128 School Community, I'd like to take a moment to thank Dr. John Gilliam, Principal at Vernon Hills High School, way down yonder. And Ole Stevens is sitting in for Tom Kalentis, who couldn't be here tonight, but we want to make sure Tom knows uh how much we appreciate his outstanding work as principal. Um, you two, um, both Tom and John make Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School a special place to work, learn, and you are greatly appreciated.
True story. Okay, uh, moving on to our consent vote agenda, we need a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
Carmichael, move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Excellent, the motion passes and we welcome our two new employees to the D-128 family. Um, now in items for action, I will turn it over to Don Carmichael, Chair of our P and P Committee for the first item.
And I'll turn it right over to Bryant for the personnel. We have, uh, normally we would have these conversations during our P and P, but every once in a while, personnel are hired after the P and P meeting and so a couple are listed here.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we're presenting the personnel report and these were after, again, um, as Don said, after the last P and P committee meeting. So we're bringing some hires to you at this time.
Uh, can I have a motion to approve the employment items that occurred after the P and P meeting?
Hessel, so moved.
Benjamin, second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Motion carries and we'll turn it over to Dr. Batson.
Yes, so, uh, we want to welcome Barbara and Allison to the D-128 family and we will turn it over to Chairperson Jim Batson for the two items for action that came out of F and F.
Thank you. First up is the authorization to bid, um, uh, renovation for the LHS cafeteria. So it's discussed extensively at a committee meeting earlier in the month and has been something that's been on the radar for a while. And just to note that this is, we're giving approval to go through the bid process. This is an approval to do the construction, but actually, uh, to approve the bid process, so we see where we stand. Um, Dan, do you have anything else you want to add?
Uh, just, uh, to reiterate what's in packets, um, there's a lot of different things we were looking at, um, different options. I wanted to be clear that the attached layout is what we intend to bid out. So that everyone's clear and the rough estimated cost at that time, uh, so we, so that we're all clear what the rough design is and what direction we're heading. So, um, that's the only thing I would want to add.
So this includes both the LHS cafeteria and some adjacent or nearby bathroom renovations?
It includes the, the kitchen, the servery, uh, associated toilet rooms that are across the way, other toilet rooms in the building that we added, uh, to the scope for kind of cost, uh, cost benefit or, um, savings. Thank you, economies of scale with contractors being there, um, as well as the learning stairs, as well. So anything on that map that is a, not a shade of gray.
Okay. Uh, can we have a motion, please?
Carmichael, move to approve the authorized bid for the LHS Cafeteria renovation project as presented.
Drumkey, second.
Any questions or comments by the board?
I just want to thank everybody on the district LHS team for designing such a thoughtful and exciting project. It is a significant investment, but, um, the board all agreed at our, uh, extensive discussion at committee, how wonderful the impact on all students will be once these renovations and additions are complete.
I'll make one additional comment. Uh, several of us got to attend the, um, IASB Lakes Division Meeting in North Chicago earlier in the month. And as you enter that building, there's a learning stair there that's, uh, probably a similar size to what we're talking about for LHS, so. Uh, just, we were able to see what the impact of something like that might look like, so. Um, okay.
I know he's not here, but I did want to acknowledge and hopefully he sees. I really want to thank Tom for his explanation of purpose, how he saw this benefiting the students and really advocating for this design and the thought, the process that went behind it and prioritizing it. So it made it very clear to me.
Uh, I'd say the same. Thank you to all of you for really looking at all the different options. We asked you to do a many gazillion things and analyze lots of different things and you came back with all those options. You were very patient and answered all our questions, so thank you for doing that.
And just a final reminder, this is an authorization to bid, not an approval of moving forward with the project at this point. We will do that later in the process, um, after we see the bids and the recommendations from administration.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, the second item here is the, um, uh, approval of the State Maintenance Project Grant. Fifty thousand dollar matching grant that we get, have gotten the last so many years. Dan, do you have some, uh, comment here?
Yeah, this is, uh, it wasn't normally an annual grant, but it seems to be working that way for the last several years. And so, uh, we are required, uh, to, it's a matching grant for up to fifty thousand, so you have to do a project that's at least a hundred thousand to take advantage of that. Uh, our strategy for these have been, uh, the roof projects that we've been doing over the last few years and so this, uh, matches well with that. Um, I'd say the other thing that is a little tricky nuanced about this is that you, you can't use this for a project that already is in motion. The intention of this is to spur on. Um, and so there's kind of rules in terms of like, the board hasn't approved it, the board hasn't authorized or accepted bids or kind of done that. So, so really, you couldn't use this for like the LHS Cafeteria project because you just authorized us to bid on that, but the, the roofing project is still in its early stages, so it would qualify under something like this, so.
Okay, we have a, uh, motion, please.
We did.
Oh, we did. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't, not for this.
No, no, we didn't.
No, sorry.
Hessel, I approve, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-four state maintenance project grant application.
Carmichael, second.
Okay. Now we're in, in, all in sync. Any comments or questions by the board?
I would like to note that I think the board would like to see as an option, uh, the solar for this project, based on prior conversations that we've had. Uh, not that it will be, um, the only way that we'd like to see the bid, but we'd like to be able to compare um, what that would cost for Roof Ten and, um, like to see if there's any assistance in the form of grants that are available to support that.
Okay, any other comments? Hey, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Motion passes and I'll turn it back over to President Hessel.
Thank you. We are at the exciting stage where we get to hear two, uh, presentations from administration. Uh, first is the academic performance data, so I will turn it over to Charlotte Ames, uh, for her interesting words.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. Um, I am here tonight to present on our academic performance data from 2022, 2023. Uh, I am Charlotte Ames, Director of Data and Assessment. So before we jump into the presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, kind of ground us in all the data that we have on our students and it is so much. Uh, just at the committee meetings, we presented on the recent SEL data. Um, of course, we track, uh, behavior data in many forms, attendance, incidents, et cetera. And of course, we track much academic data. Uh, some of this appears on our school report card, so we will do a presentation on that once that is public, which is October 30th. Um, so following that, uh, being published, we will do a presentation. And tonight's presentation will focus on the other academic data that is not included in our report card. So that is these four things. So we will be talking about the PSAT eight-nine and PSAT ten, uh, that were taken in the spring by our ninth and tenth graders. We'll talk about our advanced placement exams and then we're going to start to look forward a little bit by talking about Star Reading and Star Math, which is something we are implementing this year on a large scale. So, uh, PSAT eight-nine and PSAT ten are given in the spring to our, uh, freshmen and sophomores. Uh, in, uh, 2023, it was given on April 12th. These are preliminary SATs and they are practice opportunities for our students as they prepare to take the SAT as juniors. This also helps identify their scoring levels so that they know where they need to improve as they prepare for the SAT they will take as juniors. So we will break this down into each test. So this slide is showing, uh, PSAT eight-nine data. We're looking at two years, two years because in spring of 2021 and spring of 2020, this test did not occur. So two years, starting with 2022 and then 2023, um, 2022 is the yellow, 2023 is the blue. And as we move forward, uh, now that we are post-pandemic and hopefully staying that way, we will add years and start looking at how this data is changing year after year. Uh, so we're seeing several things here. Um, the first set of bars is just the participation rate, uh, which is important because this is required for our ninth graders to take. Uh, and then we have, the, the test is split into two sections, just like the SAT. So the EBRW or Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, um, so the number of students meeting benchmarks in that. And then the number of students meeting benchmarks in the math section. We also track number of, or percentage of students who meet both benchmarks and percentage of students who meet neither benchmark. So those last two bars there are the only bars we want to see decrease over time. Um, and on this particular, uh, test between 2022 and 2023, we did see that and we had some improvements for the meeting benchmarks, so that's always promising to see. This is a demographic disaggregation. This is only 2023 data shown here. And the blue line that you see across represents, uh, where we were in terms of our total population meeting the benchmark on the EBRW portion of the PSAT eight-nine. So that was eighty-nine point zero percent of our students. And then you can see on the slide, the green bars breaking down our demographic populations and where, um, where they were in comparison to our, um, overall meeting benchmark percentage. So we see, uh, some of the same groups that we know we need to continue focusing on, uh, to help them make some improvements.
And this graph, um, this represents current sophomores only?
Current sophomores, correct. Okay, thank you. And this is the same information but for the math portion. So we see a pattern, the same groupings of students, um, and, uh, so that, that tells us where we really need to continue our focus. Okay, the next couple of slides will be very similar charts, but we're looking now at the PSAT ten. So these are our current juniors. Um, this is data from when they took the PSAT ten last year as sophomores. So again, uh, the yellow is, uh, 2022, the, um,
I'm sorry, will you clarify what we're, which groups we're comparing?
So this, so the 2023 would be our current juniors. The 2022 would be our current seniors.
Got it.
So two, two years of PSAT ten data, so from when they were, when they were sophomores. So, um, so similar to what we saw for PSAT eight-nine, um, the same breakdown. So participation, uh, percent meeting the EBRW section benchmarks, percent meeting the math benchmarks, percent meeting both, and percent meeting neither. Uh, this particular chart, a little more stagnant, a couple places where there's a slight drop, a couple places where there's a slight increase.
Wait, I'm sorry, I thought I understood, but now I'm confused. So this, the 2022 would be current seniors and the 2023 are current juniors?
That's correct, yes.
And this is what, how they performed as sophomores?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the demographic breakdown again. Uh, so for the overall population, uh, we had an eighty-one point seven percent meeting the EBRW benchmark. This is only 2023 data now. Uh, we are seeing the same groups of students whose, uh, whose benchmark percentages are lower, who we really need to, uh, focus in on. And the same thing for the math. So on math, the, uh, overall meeting percentage was sixty-three point three percent. That's that blue line again, and we see how our groupings compared. And then this one is a little different. So in this chart, we are looking at a cohort. These are our current juniors and this is tracking that same group of students from when they were freshmen to when they were sophomores. When, once they have taken the SAT this spring, we can add another bar there to see uh, how that, how that trend carries on. Uh, so we are seeing in this chart that the achievement of that group of students decreased from their ninth grade year to their 10th grade year. This is currently the only cohort data that we have looked at. So we don't know yet if this is something specific with this group of students or if this is a trend overall. So this is something we need to continue tracking and continue monitoring. We can pull cohort data for our current seniors. However, they did not take the PSAT eight-nine as freshmen. So we can look at PSAT ten and last year's, um, SAT that they took as juniors. Uh, we can't report on this, um, in this presentation because that's SAT data, uh, that, uh, we will report on once the report card goes public. So we don't have a lot of cohort data to look at right now, but this is something that I plan to continue to monitor, uh, to see if we see the same trend uh, and that's, uh, more of a system-wide issue or was that something specific with this group of students? But we, we need more information to make any conclusions about that.
I have a couple of quick questions on this. Uh, the PSAT nine-ten and the PSA, or the eight-nine and the PSAT ten, uh, are they the same exact tests or these are different?
No, they are different tests meant to target the skills uh, that students would have learned by that point in their education.
Yeah, and do we know if there's a, a, a similar trend in the state or the national level? Do we have any information?
I haven't, uh, I haven't looked at that, but I, I certainly think we could find that information. And, and see.
We've seen in the past different anomalies like this where maybe the test changed and they, you know, the, it, everyone sort of took a step back kind of thing, so.
Right, correct. Yeah, so yeah, that is definitely something that we could look at as a follow-up to see if we're in line with a trend. Yes, thank you.
Also, before we move on to AP, can, I mean, do we want to do questions about?
Yeah, sure, yes. Let's do questions about this set and then we'll move on.
I kind of have my brain on the PSAT.
Absolutely.
One thing I would be interested in is achievement pre-COVID. I mean, are we moving to, where were we pre-COVID as opposed to where are we now? Are we closing the gap or is the gap widening or are we about the same so that we can?
Sure, that's definitely something we can pull. Yeah, I, I don't have that prepared for this presentation, but we can certainly look back at previous years. Any others? Okay. So let's look at our So let's look at our advanced placement data. So AP exams are given in May of each school year. And when we look at AP data, we look at pass rate. So a passing score on an AP exam is a three or higher out of a total of five possible. So anything three or above. So this, this slide just is giving some basic information about our AP program. The very first set of bars is an actual count of students. So that is counting for three years, our AP course enrollments. That's total enrollment. So a student who is taking multiple AP tests is being counted multiple times in, in, in that number. So in 2023, we had 3,444 AP course enrollments. We can see that that number has dropped a little, then started to go back up. So that is just how many students are participating in AP courses. The next two are percent graphs. The first set is showing three years of, out of the students who are enrolled in an AP course, what percentage of them took the exam? So students are not required to take the exam. Most of our students do, as you can see from the chart. We had, it looks like 99.8% in 2023. And that number has, that percentage has been slightly growing over the past three years. And then the, the last set of bars is our, our pass rate for the past three years. So also growing steadily, which is a nice thing to see that the pass rate is going up.
I have a question, and I should have asked this earlier, but I'm trying to see if you have done any analysis on Slide 11, which is the cohort of students where achievement seems to be going down versus the AP seems to be going up. So that's just, it's just curious, I'm just curious to see, you know, what the next level of analysis there looks like because it, it seems odd.
So I would certainly need to dig into that deeper. I would say they are measuring different things. So I don't know how much of a, of a, of a comparison we have because we are measuring very different things with the two types of exams. But certainly it's something that we could look into and see if anything emerges.
One other, just to build on that, the AP tests are in the focused discipline-based assessments, and students elect to take that course. So there's a lot of motivation for students to be interested and, and put forth a lot of energy to pass and be prepared. The SAT test, all students must take. So that's our accountability measures for all students. So I think that could be one thing that is influencing maybe the direction of some of the outcomes we're seeing.
Also, sorry, please go ahead.
I was just saying, that's a good point because your population of users taking one versus the other is, is different.
And I would say for each cohort, I would like to see, once it's available, certainly it isn't for 10th graders now, but PSAT eight-nine compared with PSAT ten and then the SAT.
Yes, yes, certainly. Yes, I, yes, I think we will definitely continue tracking and monitoring that for each cohort that comes through, yes.
Thank you.
Charlotte, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
Can you comment on kind of the average pass rates of AP students? So when you compare AP exams taken as to the percentage pass, like where does that generally fall, I guess? You know, I don't know if you look at these kind of like nationally speaking or?
Yes, so pass rates for AP exams are very dependent on the course. Some courses have, have generally very high pass rates, some courses have lower. So when we look at course by course, we can compare ourselves to the state pass rate, and we can compare ourselves to the global pass rate. And in the addendum to the presentation, every course that, that we had a, a student take an exam in is listed with three years of our data in addition to the comparison, the 2023 comparison to state and global. But that really needs to be looked at course by course.
Sure.
So that is in the addendum, which I'll speak about briefly in a couple of slides.
Thank you.
These next slides, the next three are slides you've seen before. They were presented by Mr. Larry Varn at the September 26th board meeting. And I just wanted to revisit them in this presentation because this speaks to some of the work we are doing with our AP program. So one of the things that we have definitely seen is some gaps in the students who are participating in AP. So we're seeing here the comparison of the population makeup versus the, that population makeup of our AP courses, and we see some gaps there. And I don't want to belabor the point because this has been presented to you, but I wanted to connect back to it and just remind us that this is something we are working on. And this is part of why we have partnered with equal opportunity schools to help us close those gaps and provide opportunities to students who haven't gotten them previously. So again, these are Mr. Varn's slides, and he allowed me to use them for this presentation. So I thank him. And you've seen them before. This is a, a showing what percent of the demographic is enrolled in AP. And then out of those students enrolled, what percent of that demographic passed their AP exam? So these are some of the gaps we're trying to close and opportunities we're trying to open for our students with our partnership with equal opportunity schools. And then I just, there are, we gave AP exams in 32 subjects in 2023. So we're not going to talk about each one this evening because we would never leave. But I pulled out four specific courses that as I was compiling the data that I saw some great growth in the pass rate. And so I just wanted to shine a light on that and highlight some places where we are making great strides and really showing improvement. So the four classes that I pulled out are AP Chemistry, AP Computer Science A, Physics I, and World History. And we see that each of those has had pretty significant growth in pass rate over the past three years. So really exciting to see that improvement.
Charlotte, I'm so sorry. Can we attribute that to anything specific?
I think we would need to look more closely at each course, which is not an exercise I have, I have done. But yeah, so I think we would really need to go course by course to see what may, what may be happening there. And certainly something we could do, but we have not yet.
I'm not sure we're asking you to do that. But I will say congratulations to the AP Chemistry, the AP Computer Science A, the AP Physics, and the AP World History teachers in the district who are obviously doing an excellent job.
And as mentioned, the rest of the AP data is in an addendum. So the addendum will go course by course. There is just too much to present here. So course by course, you'll see three years of, of pass rates for our district. And then for 2023, you'll see the state and global comparison if you dig into that, so.
I, I have one follow-up question. I'm looking at the advanced placement percent of demographic earning AP credit. And if you look at the number of students, the percentage of students that did not pass the exam, they also fall in the same demographic that we're all worried about. So my question is, how do we feel about adding more AP classes and putting students in more AP programs when the ones that are in those programs currently look like are, are struggling? So to me, it seems like slightly opposing. They're not passing. Well, yeah, I mean, to me, that's the, yeah.
Has there been conversation about adding more AP classes?
I think that's, I mean, we're.
More enrollment.
I think we want to make sure students who are interested and who could be successful in those classes are there. And right now, we have underrepresented subgroups. So I think that's, again, what EOS is trying to help us find. We're not in a campaign to increase our AP enrollment, although I know there are some parents who've asked questions about some of the rankings of US World and News Report and Niche and some of those other things. And those outside indicators do use participation rates on AP as one of the indicators, which is why we sort of, you know, we accept the rankings, but it's not always aligned with everything that we value as a school district. So we want to make sure that every student who is capable of engaging in and being successful in an AP class, which should be every student who wants to and has the skills and the drive, is able to participate. We are actually, as we showed in the Exploring Multiple Passes program, we are literally trying to grow is our dual credit program. That we have said is one of the metrics that we want to try and grow. That's another way for students to earn college credit is by actually taking the class rather than taking the AP class and then taking a test. So for some students, that's a mu- much more direct pathway for them to earn early college credit. So I think the AP part of our program, we're trying to get representative participation and maximize participation. It's not to try and grow the program necessarily. We literally are trying to grow our dual credit program and, and increase the number of opportunity students have in that program.
And won't the AP data be something we have to substantiate to the state for the new requirements, the new guidelines where we're required to make sure that more students are getting opportunities for honors and AP classes?
The Advanced Placement Act does require that we use data for incoming freshmen, but also our freshmen who are going to be sophomores, sophomores who are going to be juniors, that based on their proficiency levels that we're showing you here tonight, that we recommend or we, we make sure they know you are eligible to take this honors class or you're eligible to take this AP class and have that be something that is automatic, that it's not something that we expect them or their parents to just know or that isn't automatically made aware to them.
Just to point to be sure that we're not confusing the Advanced Placement Act with Advanced Placement Courses because those are two different things. The Advanced Placement Act just says that they're going to take the next most rigorous course, not that they're going to be placed in an AP college board class.
Which could be an honors, could be a dual credit, could be.
And then John wants to say something, and then I have another question after that.
It's just a note, it's accelerated placement.
Oh, thank you.
So accelerated placement is the act that's, that's placing kids in the next higher track based on their assessment scores. And then advanced placement are the courses that we're talking about here.
So the, what is it?
Accelerated.
Thank you. You said it, and I immediately lost it. The accelerated placement law is trying to take the subjectivity out of which students are offered the opportunity to move up. So students are offered that opportunity, and we're going to have to substantiate that data to the state. But they're not going to be required to take the next level. So the next level could be honors, the next level could be AP. And we're, could be dual credit, but we're not requiring them to take it. But we are, the Accelerated Placement Act does require all students to be given the opportunity to move up to the next level.
Exactly, and think about it this way. If, if I'm a student who, for some reason or another, has not had placement and/or access or feeling like they have access to AP or honors courses, and they score well in their placement test, their PSAT test or SAT test, and now they get accelerated placement into those, well, it's very unlikely. It's likely that they would be placed into four different AP courses or have the option to take four. But most counselors wouldn't recommend them into four. They would say, okay, let's look at your well-being, let's look at your involvement in school, let's look at all the different factors. And maybe you want to reach into one, or maybe you want to reach into two. And in those, you have the option to do it. In the others, you opt out or opt back into, you know, the level from which they're coming from, that kind of thing.
Can I just make a, and, and this is from observation from a number of districts and my own personal experience. The fact that we would increase an underrepresented group doesn't necessarily mean that that would be detrimental to the, the success rate of those students. In fact, statistics show that as you increase those underrepresented groups, that those students, especially when they're, they're selected in this, hopefully this act will, will assist with that, actually perform better. And that, the, the actual pass percentages actually go up, which is counterintuitive at first, but I've seen it happen numerous times in other districts. So it's, it's not unusual for that, to, to really address that and address those underrepresented groups and have them be successful.
Even if the AP scores went down, if you had more people taking them, the experience of being in a college-level course is the indicator of college success. So having the experience is, is important. So if we averaged fours and fives in physics, and we had more students taking physics, and we had more threes because we had more students taking it than we had taking it before, I wouldn't be disappointed by that statistic that our grades were going down because we are serving more kids.
It's an important perspective, thank you. It's a good question. I'm going to turn it back over to.
I have one more question.
Yes, please.
I think that I've asked this before, but if I haven't, then forgive me. But in this report, I think that we should start seeing dual credit as one of the things that we are reporting on and that we should annually, each time, have tracking data on dual credit.
Yes, and, and that is something that we plan to begin, yes, absolutely.
And you know, it can educate me. So passing rate is a score of three or better?
Correct.
But the reality, and there are a thousand reasons to take AP courses for the experience, for being prepared, for making that next step, if that's what you want. But most schools do not give credit unless it's a four or five, is that right?
Actually, all state schools accept a, a three, are required to accept.
It varies.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So that's what I was going to ask, is it worth us having? I mean, I hate to dive even more, but do we want to see that number of threes versus fours and fives? Just to report to the community, this is what most of our participants are doing in the form of moving them, waving them through courses if they choose to go to college. But now you're telling me that most state schools allow the three, so.
In the state of Illinois.
It varies so much from state to state also. So we have so many students going to Indiana and Minnesota, and I, I think that would actually.
And it varies widely, not only by state but by subject matter. So.
I think we're going to keep it simple and go with the pass rate, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the next and the last piece of the presentation is actually starting to look ahead. So first, at STAR testing, which is something that we're implementing on a large scale this school year. So STAR testing has been around in the district, but it, it, this is the first year we are really implementing it on a, a greater scale and doing it in a very systematic way. So our STAR assessments will be given three times per year. You can see the windows there, there's a fall, winter, and spring window. These are being given, there's a STAR reading that's being given in all ninth through 11th grade English courses, three times per year. And the STAR math is being given in all ninth through 11th grade math classes with the exception of certain AP math classes. So there are many, many things that we can do with, with STAR assessment reporting. STAR, STAR is a piece of the company Renaissance, and they provide a massive number of different types of reports. We'll look at just a couple this evening for our first data point. But we are implementing training for our teachers so that they can use their, these reports in their classes. And we are looking at how to best use these district-wide. And I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end, but there's a lot that goes into these STAR assessments. Part of it is progress monitoring. We do have a plan also to start incorporating these scores into our course placement decisions so that we are looking at multiple measures and not just one test that a student took. So the first report that we are looking at with all the lovely colors, this is a percentile ranking report. And this is a really interesting report because. And this is a really interesting report because our district gets to set where we want those color codes to be. And the color codes, you can see the breakdown there, we are looking at percentile rank. And what this tells us, this is a nationally-normed set of assessments, so what this tells us is at this grade level, at this moment in time, this is how our students are doing compared to others nationally. So based on their grade level, based on the month that they took the test. So we have these various breakdowns, so green meaning at or above a 40 percentile rank, and that's where we're setting the benchmark for this particular report. And then we have blue, which we call on watch, meaning those students, we want to monitor, we want to see what they do, they may not need an intervention yet, but we need to be on the lookout. A yellow is an intervention is needed, and a red is an urgent intervention. So this is just one way that we look at these reports. And a teacher could look at a report like this for their class, and it would help them, they can dig way down to which standards are in the green, blue, yellow, red, and what needs to be focused on. And they can do that then by their whole class, they can do it by individual students. So there's a lot of information for teachers in there. And then another report that we get, this is, this is just the STAR reading. So on the last slide, we were looking on the left at STAR reading and on the right at STAR math. On this slide, we're just looking at STAR reading and we've broken out the grade levels, so ninth, 10th, and 11th. And this is showing us SAT readiness by grade level. So this report tracks whether students are on track to reach college and career readiness benchmarks on the SAT, assuming they're going to take that in April of their junior year. And this is determined by a comparison of student scores from their most recent STAR reading or STAR math, when we look at that one, to month-specific benchmarks. So this is a report that is showing us, as a ninth grader in August, am I meeting the benchmarks that I should be to be ready to meet those benchmarks on the SAT when I'm a junior? And so the benchmarks change by month for each grade. So we're seeing here not as much green as we would hope to see for at or above benchmark, but I want to note that this is one test, it's one moment in time. The data that is going to be important is how this changes once the students have taken the winter test. So are we seeing progress? Are we seeing those green sections grow and the yellow section shrink? It's not a ton that we can tell from this, and this was taken in the first few weeks of school, not a ton we can tell from this until we see how it continues. But we'll look at that for math as well, just to give you an idea. So this is the math version. And so in the winter, after the students have taken these tests again, we'll put those bars next to each other and see, have those green spaces grown? And that's what's, I think, going to be most telling in this report on are we making the progress that we need to make.
And each bar is a different cohort of students?
Yes, correct, yes. So to wrap up, I just want to give you, and I talked a little bit about this a moment ago, but I want to just give you a snapshot of how we're planning to use STAR and what we're doing. So we have had some teacher trainings already, and we will continue that. Again, the system that STAR is a part of, it has such robust reports and almost, almost an overwhelming amount. So we have had some focused teacher training on what are the most important, most impactful reports to pull and look at so that you can reach your students in your classroom right where they are. So we have had some successful trainings and will continue doing that. As the school year goes on, we have two more administrations planned, we will continue the training. The teaching and learning team is also looking at developing some protocols for the use of the STAR data in various settings. So how do we use it in the classroom? How do we use it in a PLC? How are we using it school and district-wide? There's so many different reports to look at what's best for the situation that we're in. So we're really in a phase of learning all of that and starting to synthesize the information so that we can have some written protocols to help our teachers and everybody in our system use this in the most impactful way.
What's the timeline for that?
So we are going, we're going to write those protocols this year. So end of the year, we plan to have those pretty set so that next year, we're just kind of rolling with it. So teachers next year will have been in the habit of giving the assessments, it'll start to feel a little bit more natural for them. And then we're this year using our time to learn and write those. But by the end of the school year, we plan to have those protocols in place. And then we also plan, as I said, to use these STAR assessments as additional data points in our course placement process so that we aren't making those decisions based on one single test in one moment in time for our students. So that will become part of that as well in future years.
In my experience, living and breathing through STAR and FastBridge and all of this, determining interventions, I'm going to go back to our teacher union representative and say, as you are doing these protocols, the one thing I don't see in any of this is, what are the interventions and who's doing them? Because it seems like this is a lot of teacher assessing data, coming up with plans, and there is no help. Not that there is no help, but it doesn't look like the interventions have been prepared to help the teachers in the classroom. And that's the biggest part of this. We can identify students that need interventions all day long, but if we don't have the interventions for them, then there's no point. And it can't all rest on the classroom teacher, who has this range of abilities in her classroom. So in these protocols, I would be looking for, here are interventions, here is our bag of tricks, if you will, and here's who's going to be doing them.
Yes, absolutely, that is true and a very good point. One thing that is connected to STAR is a program called NearPod, and that's one way to provide interventions and are, again, our teachers-
Could you describe what that is for people who don't know?
Yeah, so our teachers are just learning it, but basically, there are certain reports in the Renaissance system that are identifying, these are the benchmarks or the standards that this particular student or these groups of students need to work on the most. And then it automatically attaches lessons through a service called NearPod. They could, they might be videos, they might be slides, could be various things, but they are lessons that are already developed that automatically attach themselves to those standards. Does that make sense? So that's a piece of it. So that's a piece of it, and teachers, when they saw that in the training, were really excited about that option. It also connects directly with Google Classroom. So if teachers have a certain group of students in a class that need a specific standard, they can direct that to those students. And if there are students needing something else, they can get a different NearPod all through Google Classroom. So it is set up to make teachers' lives a little easier in that way. And of course, that's just one piece, but that is incorporated into the license that we have.
I guess I'm looking more into the human, the human element of it, because I thought as we were shifting to heterogeneous teaching and grouping, that is going to alleviate some of our staffing, make staffing available so that we have humans working with our students who need interventions. And that-
We have two different teams of people who are working on that particular model. So not just, I mean, we want it to be MTSS with the counselors and other people understanding those interventions, so when they're recognizing a student across, so getting very clear on what are those tier-one interventions that teachers should be doing in our classrooms and PLCs should be saying? And then what when those get exhausted? Then what does tier-two look like? And that, so when we visit other programs, we'll be looking, what does their math interventionist do at the high school level? Is it push-in, is it pull-out, is it small group instruction? What are those things? So in addition to, let's say rewriting the, making sure we're using the best-of curriculum for English IX, that's going to be for heterogeneous classes, we'll also be saying, what are the support staff that's going to make sure the teachers teaching those courses have the resources they need?
Thank you.
Okay, that is all I have for you. Are there any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Wait, we have a question.
Yeah, so because we like mentioned how like some SAT scores and like PSAT scores are like something that we want to like work on, like raising, which we have like a good percentage of like people over the benchmark right now, but I will say that I do wish that we had resources at school that taught us how to like prepare and stuff like, we have things like the MASH and the Right Place and stuff like that, which is really helpful for like getting math and science and English help, but I wish like we had a place in school where like we would go and like people would teach us how to like study for like the SAT and PSAT.
Yes, that's a great point, yes, thank you. So I will tell you, I don't have the solution right here, right now, but there are people looking at what options we have for that, and I appreciate knowing that that would be valued.
Any other student comments or questions?
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, we have a grading and assessment update. I will turn that over to, back, looks like to Dr. G and Dr. Sanchez.
Yes, so just to, I'm going to give a quick overview of what we've done since the committee has started, which was last fall. We worked together to develop the beliefs and parameters that were presented in May, and so just a quick reminder of what those beliefs and parameters are, and these are the practices that we are asking our pilot teachers to implement this fall. So we had assessment and accuracy, making sure that the essential standards were accurately measured through effective assessment practices, ensuring that course teams agree upon grade calculation within the summative assessment category and the coursework category. And then we also asked teams to provide some consistency on regular, timely, and transparent communication, like how often parents can expect their grade books to be updated, how often they can expect feedback. We also asked the teams participating in the pilots to select a consistent grading scale, and so all of the pilot teams and teachers participating have done that. And then there are three more categories, the human and behavior skills, which is dealing with making sure that our students are not being graded for behaviors in the classroom, but it also allows classes where behaviors are part of the participation, like a PE, for those grades to be included as long as it's tied to a standard. Then we also added a category for academic dishonesty and reassessment, asking our course teams to be, to have consistency in their reassessment practices and how they're allowing students to take advantage of the retakes and redos. So those are the six parameters that we established as a committee last year. Since our last update to you in July, we've, on the October 9th institute day, we gathered feedback from the teachers participating in the pilot. And so from that feedback, we ran focus groups and we have some themes that emerged during the focus groups. And a large portion of these themes are what we're using to help us prepare for the full implementation next school year, so that they will be driving some of the professional development as well as the supports that we put in place. So we have some, some themes emerge around making sure we provide greater clarity around common language, what exactly do we mean when we say summative assessment, and coursework is an example. More clarity on what the system is looking for in terms of academic dishonesty consequences and how that is going to be supported through the LST. More supports on how to make greater use of comments and feedback in the power school, power teacher, through the power teacher system. Also, how are we going to work with students to help them find value in work that isn't necessarily going to be graded, but that is there to help them develop mastery and proficiency? We have some feedback around the grading scales and how we can, what does a 40% represent versus a 50%, and making sure that we provide clarity on that to everyone. Also, specifically to reassessment, there, we found that that is something that is, we don't have a lot of consistency in that, the teachers in their focus groups don't seem to want like a blanket district-wide policy on how reassessment must be done, but they do want to be able to agree with their course teams at the same time. And so they're asking for some clear parameters around that. And also just support around how to compromise in order to be aligned within the course teams. So if we have a course team of five or six teachers and they each have very differing opinions as to how reassessment should be done in their classroom, they're asking for us to provide more supports on how they can reach a compromise that they all feel comfortable with. We also had some feedback around making sure that we provide time for course groups to work together outside of their PLCs to make sure they have all of these things ready to go. And more differentiate, they want differentiated professional development. As we're learning, we have some course teams who have been doing a lot of this work for some time, so they may not need the professional development support that course teams who are just beginning to learn about this, as well as some more education around what exactly we're talking about when we meet equidistant grading scales and some of these practices. So that was some of the feedback that we gathered at the October 9th focus group. And I know that y'all wanted to hear some feedback from students and parents, and so we're planning to do a larger-scale survey towards the end of the first semester so that folks have had an opportunity to have, you know, almost a full semester of implementation and living with this. But we are going to have some of our student reps share a bit of their perspective as to how far it's, how it's gone since we've started the pilot.
And you said that'll be after students have completed a full semester?
The full, the survey will go out, but tonight, we have some of our student board reps who will share how, what some of their experiences have been thus far.
Nice.
Hi, so I'll start. So actually, three of my classes are a part of the new grading pilot, AP Physics C, AP Government, and Journalism. One aspect that I've seen across the board is actually the improvement of grades being put in in a more timely manner, especially since last year, I've seen myself and other students, the fact was that a lot of grades were being put in before the semester ended, no matter how bad that may seem, but I've seen that like my, I think this is the, one of the earliest times that grades have put, been put in and have had a grade in a class in my whole high school career. And for, I think, progress period one, my journalism class didn't have a grade because we were still working on our first issue, and my teacher, Ms. Phillips, she sent an email to me and my family talking about why in that specific progress period, we did not have a grade. One thing I will say is, one of the benefits was also in seeing the certain standards and the grades. For example, my government test, usually they're out of 25 to 30 points. So if I got three points off, I would still get an A, and I would see that grade as an A overall. But now, as I've seen the standards, I can see that usually the three points come out of the same category, so even though I can score really well in other categories, I would be getting- So even though I can score really well in other categories, I would be getting an F in one category. So that category can help me do better on the AP exam.
Yeah, I think when it comes to focusing on the standard-based grading, I think more access to exactly what the standards are that were being graded. We have the same teacher for AP Government and instead of taking a test out of thirty points, it's kind of split up into out of five points. So instead of seeing a twenty-five out of thirty, I could see three out of five, four out of five, and then two five out of fives. And it could seem a little daunting to see like a D, a B, an A. Like you really don't understand exactly how well you're doing in the class. And I think as someone who's been in AP courses for a long period of time with, you know, the combination of an eighty percent, twenty percent with the formative and summative on top of the new grading policy, I think it's really not translating the way that I would hope from like a zero to four to an A to F, to really understand exactly how am I doing in the class from like just to learning and like gaining of the knowledge or the topics. So, yeah.
Thank you for that feedback.
So I'm writing down what they said.
Yeah, take, take a moment. So we appreciate you providing us with another update. As you know, the board is very interested in this topic and there hasn't been a lot of time that passed from the last update to this one, but it's still some substantial information that we appreciate you sharing with us. Do we have any questions for Dr. Sanchez? Or for Dr. Herman for that matter, or any, anyone, any questions?
So, yeah, going this way actually, go any direction. But so three fives and four and a two doesn't translate to an A, B, C, or D. And that A, B, C, or D, I think is what parents understand. They're like, oh, you're getting a B, nice job. Could be an A, but at least it's something that's traditional. So how do you translate those grades? Or how are the teachers translating the grades? That can go in any direction. So if anybody wants to take that. Because I, I know of some districts that have these like crazy sophisticated computer programs that will take the standards and spit out a grade. And the teacher will say, yeah, that looks about right. And then that's what'll get posted. I don't know if we have, and, and there's a great deal of frustration with that model. So how's that going?
Yeah, let me just speak to that a little bit. I think what's fair to say is if we were to do kind of a status check on the some eighty teachers who are using, who are involved in the pilot, a pretty strong majority of them are still using the hundred-based, hundred-point scale with a forty basement for a non-attempt, a fifty basement for an F, and then sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred. So that's still probably the, the, the scale of choice. I don't know when you two, when you talk about, or any of you five, when you talk about the numbers of teachers who are actually using the zero through four or zero through five or some other equidistant scale. Maybe just ask you, how many of your teachers are using that in comparison to the, the forty to a hundred?
So from what I saw, a lot of my teachers started off, like two of my three classes started off as zero to four scales. But then because of the troubles with Power School and actually doing those scales, all my classes are now forty to one hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one, Bible as Literature is one of my classes that's still using the zero to four scale. But they, this class is more full of bigger projects that are maybe like four grades per, as a semester class. So I feel like the impact to a class, a course like that is maybe not as substantial as maybe in AP Government or AP Psychology is the one that's, for me, that's using the forty to one hundred.
So, so I think the point is, the, your point about just calculating the grade is one of the things that's difficult. The idea that teachers and students have to live in both sides of Power School, this, this standards-based side and this, this hundred percent, this hundred-point scale. And then just the, the kind of the go-between initially was difficult. They've done some patchwork to figure it out since. But I think like these, these ladies are saying, most of the teachers are still using the hundred-point scale. So I, I think that's okay for where we are now. I think as we learn Power School better, understand the way to kind of morph between the two systems, the two kinds of grade books, and develop systems to actually figure out the grade. Because in the end, like you said, we still are driven by a transcript that still has to have a grade. So even if we believe fully in standard-based grading, the teacher still at the end of the day has to translate it to an A, B, C, or D or F. So that's, that's just something that, that we're working through. I'm encouraged that, my fear was that every teacher was gonna, you know, blow off the zero through four and just go to the back, kind of back to the hundred-point scale. But I'm encouraged that there are some teachers who are kind of sticking with it, grinding through some of the difficulties between the systems, trying to get it figured out so that we can work out the bugs and hopefully still have a bunch of teachers doing that next year.
And then just from a board member's perspective, I would like to say to all of the teachers who are involved and the teachers who will be involved and to all of the students, I hope there's a great deal of grace in all directions. Because it's a growing pain and it's frustrating, but everybody wants to do the right thing. So I hope, you know, there, there's times where you get into that like argument over a grade. I'm just saying that from a board member's perspective, I would give grace. I would say like, yeah, this is going to be a problem, we're going to work it out. It's going to take time and thank you for being the ones that are trying.
And I appreciate as somebody who is a retired teacher that spent your career teaching and in a district that made this difficult shift, I think that's an important point to note. So thank you for making it. Any other questions?
I had one, it, it, when I read this, it sounds like there were some discussions on current practices that are good practices and maybe should continue. Any, can you give some examples of those?
So I think that the parameters that, that were shared with everybody are all based on, on some of the current things that we were already doing and that are best practice. I think one of, one of the things that has garnered the most conversation has been the reassessment. Because that is the one that we still are, have more variety. And so that is something that we are talking about and trying to explore, how we can develop more consistency, but still I'll provide, still have course teams to have some autonomy in how they do that. Would either, would you guys like to add anything?
I think, I think the other one that is kind of garnering quite a bit of discussion, and I'm not sure if your question was things that teachers fully agree on, is that, is that what your question was?
No, it, it sounds like there were some current practices that are good practices today. I was just looking for what, what some examples of those might be. You don't, you don't have to change everything when you're looking to make improvements, right? Sometimes some things are fine the way they are. And I was just curious if any have come up to that level.
Not necessarily off the top of my head. I think, I think some of the practices, so when you look at the teachers in the pilot, let's say, I think it's fair to say that many of these teachers have been practicing a lot of these things for some time. So they've gotten used to not putting behaviors into a grade, not, not using things like tardiness or late work or those kinds of things. Whereas you have teachers who are new to these kind of more progressive ideas or, you know, just entering this pilot from kind of a trial basis who haven't worked with some of these things before. And so there's, there's quite a bit of push and pull on those kinds of, of theories relative to grading. I think that was part of the, the feedback sessions that we had that was, that was eye-opening for me, is this idea that something that one might think is, is understandable and part of their practice for some time, another might wholeheartedly see a different perspective on. And so, you know, we've got to kind of navigate those waters and figure out, especially as course teams are working together to, to kind of determine their process and, and where they'll go next year, trying to find teachers who are kind of in line with how they, how they view grades and how they view everything from coursework to summative work, the percentages that they're going to implement in their grades in those areas, that kind of thing.
I'll sort of echo what Don said and, and I'll use the term patience. Because anytime you're, you're changing a paradigm like this and, I know it's frustrating and I'm a believer in sort of an evidence-based, standards-based kind of concept. It, it really makes sense in my mind. But the struggle that we, many of us have are the systems that are in place were designed for something different. And while those systems like a Power School are catching up with how we want to track more of a standards-based or an evidence-based grading concept, it's, it's frustrating because it doesn't do everything we needed to do. So I, you know, I would just encourage us all to have patience and, you know, be able to work through and come out with the, the best process that we can come up with to do the right thing for our kids and for the, for the learning.
Prokaya?
So I just want to add that like when the Vernon Hills reps asked me about like the grading pilot, like me and like, like we didn't know what it really was. And like we asked around like if there was like a new grading thing and like, no one really like said anything about that. And I don't know if it's just that like my classes don't use it or like, I don't really, I guess I just don't really understand what it is yet. So because most of my classes really just grade things like traditionally, like the way like, it's just like the questions and the, the points and that's it. But like I have like other classes, like for example, AP Calc, like every unit has learning targets and like we get tested on that learning target specifically and like each one has its own score. Other classes like AP Bio, for example, like she will still put in the grade like traditionally in Power School, but then the way like she'll send you a report and it's like this is how you performed on each learning target. So I guess I'm not really just understanding what the grading pilot really is.
And that's okay. That's because most likely that your teachers aren't, haven't chosen to be in the grading pilot. So your question is kind of twofold, what is the pilot? So last year, a group of educators getting feedback from parents and teachers and students created kind of a, a grading kind of guidelines moving forward. But instead of implementing it all this year, what we said is, all right, we're going to create a pilot of teachers who are willing to try it out, provide feedback along the way. And so those teachers have been selected. These two have teachers who are in the pilot. It could be that you three don't and that's okay. So that, that's not a total surprise that you'd be sitting there like, I'm not sure if any of my teachers are in the pilot. So either they're not, or they just haven't told you that they're in the pilot, which I suppose could happen, you know? But that's, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those guidelines are like actively like changing and like improving, right? Like they're not like fully set, or are they?
Yeah, no, they're not fully, that's what all this feedback is about. I would say that we've got pretty much set on our, our, our big heavy fence posts, but we're trying to figure out where we, we kind of put the fence in between there. And that's what all this feedback is for.
And then with the guidelines, also I wanted to add that like something that I've noticed because a lot of my classes, specifically my AP classes are all, most of them are like only tests and assessments count in the grade book and homework doesn't. So just when we, when you guys like look at guidelines, like if we can like look into that more and like the student perspective on that, because for me, I think like there's a lot of like benefits and like also negatives that come with that because it's like different student to student, like how they deal with that, because some people aren't really test takers, but then like they'll do good on the homework and the assignments and stuff. But then with other students, they don't feel like they need to do the homework or practice to perform on the test. So if we can look into that while making guidelines, that would be great.
That is all part of it.
Yeah, that's all part of it. And that's, that's a great example of one of the kind of nuanced pillars that we're talking about that, that comes with very different beliefs. Like we have some teachers and some educators who will say, no, it should all be summative. You shouldn't have any kind of coursework because really the grade should reflect your learning. So how do you reflect your learning? You look at your summative assessments to say, okay, this is what she's learned over time. It's not about, did you complete three points here and there for homework, right? So there's that, or there's, there's those that would say, yeah, but a, a teacher, a student's experience along the way is what kind of, what kind of student were they, what kind of work did they do in my class? Did they do the homework when I, those kinds of things. So that, that's just one example of, of one of these issues that people are on. You know, they have different perspectives on, so I appreciate yours.
Thank you. And thanks, Dr. G. Thanks, Dr. Sanchez. If there's no further questions, I think we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. There are three port, portions to the report tonight. First is a very simple acknowledgement of a donation that the Libertyville High School Fine Arts Department received, two dresses and skirts as costumes, and we received that from Sonia Valens, so thank you very much. Next up, our director of communication, Mary Toderick, is here to share our first prototype of the tool that we would like to use as progress monitoring towards the action plan for our strategic plan. So that was one of the things that we talked about. How can we make sure that the progress we're making, not only in terms of seeing changes in student growth, it might not happen for a year or two, but making sure people understand the progress we're making on taking action steps to move closer to that reality. So I'll turn it over to Mary, who is going to be in the driver's seat.
Okay, thank you. Bo, could you go to the summary page? Perfect, thank you. So yes, what Denise just said, we have been working with Qualtrics to develop a, a link that will be on our strategic plan website that will be public facing and everyone can see exactly where we are in respect to the overall completion of the strategic plan as well as all of the different goal areas. So as you can see on the screen here, this is the summary page. So this is where you would come initially. The twenty-three percent that's up there right now reflects where we are overall with, with all the goal areas of the plan. And if you could scroll down just a little, Bo. Each of the goal areas is on this page with their individual percentages of completion. And if you could go to one of the goal areas on the left there, Bo, any one of them. So this is the health and wellbeing area. And this page, as is for each of the goal areas, has each of the objectives listed as well as the tasks under those objectives. And each of the goal leaders will have, or they do have access to a live form. And they, as they complete tasks, will just mark them off and it will be reflected in the percentage dials that are on these pages. Each of the task areas is also listed as either not yet started, in progress, or complete. And that's where we are at this point of the, the dashboard. The second phase, which we'll be developing shortly, is how we will be able to show evidence of each of the goal areas and the tasks. What did, what did that look like that we completed it? So stay tuned for that.
Is that live right now? Like is that available?
It is not, it's not posted. This is live, but not public, if that makes sense. I'm sorry?
That's something that's coming soon?
Yes, we're, we're going over it one more time to make sure that it's all good in terms of ADA compliance and accessibility.
Thank you. Yeah, we wanted to get feedback from you and knowing this is phase one, phase two, being able to click on an artifact or click on the data. So this isn't the end of it, but it is something that will make it very tangible, the things that we are working on. And, and so we wanted to just get affirmation that this is one way that you wanted yourselves and the public to be able to see this. And we'll be adding more to its sophistication as it gets built out.
I think this, this is really good. The only things as you, as you look to make this more sophisticated would be think about, are there any barriers to getting anything done? Maybe that's not something you want to put out there, but something for us to discuss.
Critical path times type of. Critical path times type of tasks.
Yep. And then eventually, if we can tie any of these to the actual financial investments that we are making, I think that would close the loop on the investment towards the strategic plan. But I think this is awesome. Thank you.
And, uh, Mary, and I will keep you posted once we put those polishes on and then when it's live to staff and all of you and the public. And then the third thing that's part of my report, I did want to build upon the message that, um, the teachers' union shared at the opening about the October 9th Institute Day. There were many things that I was very proud of on that day. And like they said, there were some very engaging speakers. We allocated a chunk of time for all staff to be able to complete the survey because last spring we received feedback from staff that it's difficult for them to do surveys like that on their prep time or before or after school. So we really worked hard to try and take some of that feedback and incorporate it into the structure of the day. But like Paul read in his summary, I think there were some missed opportunities at the onset or when we had those keynote addresses to help the staff make more connections between those particular learning sessions. And so, for example, the AP data that we had showed in, at the September meeting. One of the things when I have an opportunity to speak in front of the whole staff, I really try to balance between not getting too data-driven and, you know, leading off with charts and graphs, but also not going too much to where we're ignoring that and, and going on more the message and the motivation and some of the things that we were focusing on that morning. So one of the things that we always do is collect feedback. And so we said, what's, are some of the strengths of the day? And what are some of the areas for growth? And like any true educational staff, what some people put as a strength is what other people put as the weakness and vice versa. But some of the patterns that Paul commented on about wanting to have more connection and through lines between our strategic plan and the EOS and the survey and the trusted adult training that we're gonna have coming up on November 8th, just again goes to their desire to be partners in this work, their desires to do very good work and to always do what Simon Sinek says is start with Y. And so, um, I think that while we planned some, some good, and a few of them were really good, people really liked them and others were good. But we missed the mark on optimizing them. And we heard that from staff, from the union sharing it. I heard it at one of my superintendent's roundtables. So again, that's one of the positives of me getting to go to each campus every month to hear that feedback directly. But I just want to let all of you know that although, um, we had grading and assessment workshops, we had EOS workshops, we had a very motivational speaker, there was still some missed opportunity on October 8th. And I appreciate the union sharing those insights with us, me, the planning team who puts those days together. And we'll incorporate that feedback into our February 19th Institute Day. Any questions on October 9th?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to board comments and events. Anybody we have learning or something they've participated in that they'd like to share? Then we will move right on to the ISP report. You said there might be something?
Nothing really, just a reminder for the upcoming conference in November that will take place before our next board meeting. But we'll have time to talk about that. And I know not everyone's able to attend that, so.
Okay, great.
But by the time we get to, cause that's, November's all one day. So, the two committees and the general.
No, it's two day, the sixth and the 13th.
Oh, you're right. So at some point, we need to have an idea of who's going to what.
Would it be worthwhile to mention the big event?
Because they- So I am going to discuss in other reports, the D128 Foundation for Learning. So thank you for that lovely segue. On Saturday, November 4th, the D128 Foundation for Learning will have its big event. As a reminder, the foundation supports innovation grants for teachers and our Students in Need Fund at all three of our buildings. And the big event is the biggest annual fundraiser where the foundation gets the money to support these great things. So, um, we will be gathering at Mickey Finn's Brewery. There will be a silent auction. There will be an 80's DJ. The event does include appeti, heavy appetizers and dessert as well as an open bar from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. So all of the proceeds are gonna benefit the programs for the teachers and students at LHS, VHHS, and Transitions Pathways. So, um, you can go to our website for a link to register. I will be attending as the liaison.
I already have my tickets, by the way.
Excellent, very good to know, thank you.
I think there was an error in that message that you were the only one that had tickets as of a particular time.
Well, I will look forward to seeing you there and I hope that-
That sounds like a friendly challenge.
And I would look forward to seeing anybody else who's able to attend or somehow support the event with a donation is another option.
Yes, I'm unable to attend this year sadly, but I was happy to see there's a link on the event flyer that allows you to make donations directly or purchase raffle tickets.
Raffle tickets and participate in the silent auction. You do not have to be present to participate in the silent auction. And I know that one of the fan favorites is always lunch with a principal. Is that gonna, tradition gonna continue?
Absolutely.
That brings in some hard cash.
It certainly does. So, um, thank you to all of our event sponsors and everybody in the public who is already planning on attending. And I do want to encourage everybody to please support the big event because it supports our students and teachers. Do we have any future agenda items in addition to the ones listed to discuss?
I just have one. It'd be great to get an update from the Career Pathways work that is being done.
Is it, is there enough time passed to provide an update or is it too soon?
We will be, uh, as part of our November PNP, we will be bringing some, um, requests that are aligned with the exploring multiple paths and the dual credit. So, maybe we'll see how you receive that information and we'll see what questions that might answer. And then based on that, we could see when we might invent, invite Ben Rodriguez to come and join us.
Anything else? Okay, um, then we just need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Carmichael, so moved.
Patson, second.
Thank you. We just need a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned at 9:02 PM. Thank you, everyone.